Hi, welcome everyone to the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zorko.
Here.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter Twenty of the Acts of Two Thousand and Twenty-One. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda at Town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a rule called Vote. This meeting will feature a resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. And we'll call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Is this working, Mike?
Uh, Zoom's on. I'm just trying to, uh, it should be good now.
Okay. It's been a while since we had an owl problem.
Yeah, it should be good now.
Okay, great. Do the announcements. A Fall Special Town Meeting. The Fall Special Town Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven PM in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. There will be a public informational warrant review session this Wednesday, October nineteenth, at the Long Meadow Adult Center at six PM, where members from the community can ask questions and learn more about the warrant articles. Please visit www-longmeadow.org/townmeeting for additional resources and to view the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant. Long Range Plan Steering Committee. Long Meadow is updating our long-range plan, the Community Master Plan, to envision and enact an equitable, climate-resilient future for all. We are soliciting at-large members to help direct our LRP Steering Committee. Interested residents can apply to be an at-large member of the LRP Steering Committee by visiting longmeadow.org/longrangeplan. Additional information on the committee's charge can also be found on this page. Advocations will be accepted through October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. First up on our agenda, we have Senator Eric Lesser. That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Permission to bring out Representative Ash.
Absolutely. Happy to have him as well.
No, not you. Well, I didn't mean to prefer to be super formal. We have a tradition. Once a year around budget time, we come by to kind of give a briefing and also hear from all of you about what's on your mind, what we need to do to get the local aid formulas up, Chapter Seventy, Chapter Ninety, everything else. Obviously, we're a little bit out of cycle for that because I will not be coming back to do that in January, February of the coming year. And I really just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you, both to the board, to the Select Board of Long Meadow, but also perhaps most importantly, to the people of Long Meadow for the trust that they've put in me and the responsibility that they've put in me over the last eight years. It's been truly an incredible honor, and I'll get a little bit emotional thinking about all the different things we've done together, both in this room and in the broader community. And Long Meadow really gave me my start in politics, gave me my start in public service. When Dan or Mr. Zorko and I were juniors at Long Meadow High School, and we were working on a Prop Two and a Half override campaign, some things never change, to help support the school system to now. So I just really, I really appreciate each of you. I appreciate the leadership and the staff of the town and, most importantly, the voters and the people of Long Meadow for the faith they've put in me. And I do also want to really thank my partner for a long, long time and a lot of places, a mentor to me really, Representative Ash. The first time I really got involved in electoral politics was your Select Board race, which was victorious.
We didn't have fancy rooms like this then.
And it was a smaller Select Board.
It was, yeah.
So, but I really am appreciative of the partnership we've had, Rep. Ash, and the work you've done before I got here, and you'll continue after I leave. And then the final thing I'll just say is I'm not going anywhere. I've got three kids in the school system. Many of you see me around. Don't have any announcements yet on what I'm going to be doing come January, but I will not be moving, and I'm not going to be leaving. So we're still going to be involved, and I'm still going to be playing an active role in the community and in the region. So happy to get into some of the substance of things, but wanted to really just start off by saying that.
Yeah, I'd like to just comment too. As Senator mentioned, the first time I got to know him when I was running for the Select Board over twenty years ago, and I think you were a sophomore in high school.
You were very young.
Yes, yeah. I was Dan's age then. But our paths, I think it's just appropriate that we're here today and saying farewell as a state senator, not as a friend. But when I got to know Eric way back then, you know, he was this young kid full of energy, and then I got on the Select Board, then our paths crossed later in town, and he's been supportive of me ever since. But it's just been a real pleasure for me, not only, you know, getting to know you way back then, but watching you blossom into your political career when you worked for the President and White House, then when you came back here and ran for Senator. But even more importantly, just getting to know you better and having you as a close friend and somebody I can call about any issues. So it's been a huge boon for the town of Long Meadow, I think, when you were elected as our state senator, and you'll certainly be missed. And I know, you know, having our senator here with me, it was nice having both of us from Long Meadow. It made things a lot easier. But I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for the town of Long Meadow, for the area, and I know what you'll continue to do. Wherever you land, I know great things will happen for you personally and whoever you're working for. So thank you.
Eric, before you get into substance, I just want to say I thank you for eight years of service fighting for Western Mass. I know we all appreciate it, and I'm happy to count you as a friend, and I've always been proud to have you as our state senator, and I'm very excited to see what you do next. And I thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mark?
What he said. Great. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I know this isn't going to be a goodbye because I know you're not leaving around. You'll be around, and I'm sure you'll get involved in other political adventures. You know, you seem to be the kind of person that gets involved in political activities when it's important. And you did that in high school, and you've done it straight through, and I commend you on that energy to seek to make this a better community and make this a better world. So thank you for all your efforts.
Better be goods, Zorko.
And I obviously echo all the sentiments from the board as well. Eric, I've known you for a very long time. Obviously, we're the same age. We graduated together, but I've always looked up to you and really respected everything that you've done in the Senate in just such a short period of time with East-West Rail, the opioid crisis, and having more access to Narcan as well. So it hits home to the district here and, you know, really appreciate everything that you've done and consider you a good friend and, like I said, a mentor. The next senator is going to have a lot of big shoes to fill. So thanks again for everything. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now give us the goods.
So, I mean, we, just a couple of pieces of kind of unfinished business. You know, rail is in a good place, but I do think it's going to need the continued advocacy of the local community and especially our local Select Boards. If you remember, the Long Meadow Select Board was one of the first boards to pass a resolution along with the Springfield City Council in support of the original legislation about eight years ago. That was a really important catalyst. Eventually, the Boston City Council even approved the same resolution, so that was important. Where rail is right now and where we're kind of handing it off is, there was a transportation bond bill passed and signed into law this past session that included two elements. One was a $270 million bond authorization for basically down payments on the preparatory work, the feasibility analysis, the engineering, all of that. Both the Baker Administration and, you know, hopefully, I can say that, hopefully, the Healy Administration is going to, you know, commit those funds, and there's every reason to hope that they will. The second piece of that was a commission that was set up. The appointments on the House and the Senate side have been made, and I'm one of the members of that commission, and we are going to be working until March. So it'll actually carry over after January is to basically send back recommendations for a potential rail authority. The issue we have is getting the federal money into the state and a mechanism for basically depositing that money and then issuing bonding, issuing contracts, doing procurement. There's pretty broad consensus. We don't want the MBTA doing it. There's an option to have Amtrak do it. There's an option to have an entirely new authority do it. There's an option to have some sort of hybrid of that. Mast dot itself could do it. So these are kind of big questions that the commission is going to look into between now and March. Send recommendations back for basically enabling legislation to do that, and then they'll be able to put the application together to the federal government. So it's in a very good place. I mean, it's in a very real place. And I remember, you know, pretty vividly, people kind of dismissing this whole idea, even until a few years ago, as something that, you know, could really never happen. Not saying it's done. It's nowhere near done, but you can see where the pieces have to come into place to make it happen.
And I just go, we're in a better spot now than we ever have to make something like this happen. So if it's going to, this will be the time.
And, you know, another, and I should point out, our federal delegation really did an incredible job writing into the Biden Infrastructure Plan, you know, basically specs that will qualify the project for federal funding. So certainly Chairman Neal and Chairman Govern and Senators Mark and Warren did a great job. You know, another item that, you know, on the topic of trains, I think we're both especially really grateful of and proud of is the work we all did with the Select Board and also with the federal delegation on finally getting the rail crossing fixed, you know, certainly in memory of Ward Cole's. And, you know, I just want to take a moment to thank them and to thank the Cole's family because after thirty years, thirty-five years of trying to get that crossing done, it was finally done a few years ago. We have a big piece, Mark, on Prop Two and a Half that is still out there. That's obviously a very big topic.
Is that the same one you were working on with Dan?
It actually is, yeah. But just for a little bit of context for people, we work with Senator Comerford, whose district obviously has a lot of communities that also have a similar challenge around Prop Two and a Half, on a commission and a study that Department of Revenue was going to do. This is often a third rail topic in state politics, Prop Two and a Half, and obviously what the impact it has on property taxes. But I think we've done a lot of work socializing that issue, and I do think probably in the next session, maybe in the context of a broader tax reform that we do, we'll be able to take a look at that. And certainly, we had legislation that's also kind of on the to-do list around redoing the local aid formulas, kind of similar to how we did a whole process around revamping education funding with the Student Opportunity Act, which I know is imperfect for communities like Long Meadow. But we've been advocating, and our Gateway Cities Caucus has been advocating for a similar process for local aid because the local aid formula has not changed in a very, very long time. So I would say the two, the two big items, you know, kind of left are kind of pending items that we're handing things off to are the continued work on Prop Two and a Half and finishing the rail. And then a final, you know, item, you know, that I think is just worth pointing out is the crumbling concrete, which just continues to be a huge, huge source of concern and frustration.
And spreading.
Yeah, and the spread, yeah, there's going to be a forum in Auburn. Did it happen or it's coming up? It's next week?
Yeah.
So, I mean, just, I mean, Rep. Ash can chime in on this. It's his legislation as well as Senator Gobie. You know, we had legislation to put in place, you know, new protections to put new testing requirements in place for quarries. It was vetoed by the governor. We had a back and forth about what the language was going to be, what the, they had different ideas about how that was going to work. Senator Gobie's already committed to refile that in January, and I, you know, I know the board's been very active on this, but that's going to be, I think, a very top priority for the region, you know, to make sure that that gets done. So, I mean, he's obviously, yeah.
It's difficult just because it's one of those things that if people don't see it, it's difficult for them to really understand for it to be tangible for them. But we've been out and seen some of these properties, and it's horrific.
Yeah.
And it's so dangerous, and it's the kind of thing that you don't necessarily know if you've got it unless something happens and the concrete gets damp or wet, and then it starts the process going. But it could be, I mean, whether it's a school, whether it's someone's home, but it can be extremely dangerous. So we want to make sure we keep pushing this to make sure we do the right thing, so.
And we have a game plan, yeah. I mean, the issue is really, I mean, if the legislation had been signed, we'd be in a different place, so we'll see. Ellen, I'm glad I looked at my notes because we obviously have the middle schools, so good luck, Brian. But obviously, I'm going to make sure that whoever my successor is is going to be kind of fully prepared. We keep pretty careful notes on everything.
Especially if you want your kids going to the middle school.
Exactly. I have an interest in this because I have three kids that would be going to those middle schools. But, you know, that's obviously another big item. I know it got slowed down a bit with COVID and everything else, but, you know, it's definitely time for Long Meadow to get those. And, you know, having been through it in multiple communities, the school building authority process is complicated. I don't know anything else.
No, I mean, I didn't know we were going to talk about issues like that. I just might, again, just say thank you for, you brought so much as a senator to not just Long Meadow, but the entire region, and I'm just so appreciative of the work you've done and the table you've set for, you know, whoever takes your seat in the next few weeks as a Select Board member, as Zorko mentioned, has big shoes to fill. But I think you've kind of left things in pretty good shape, so thank you. Well, that's the music. They're calling us off. It's like the academies. I don't want to thank my mother and my father.
Anything from the board?
Brian, we're the same.
What's that?
We just need more of the same.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
And whoever fills in the seat next, you know, make sure we bring him by and we'll.
Senator, there is an opening for the Select Board come June, so if you want to.
I think I got to take a little bit of a break from, but I'll answer the questions.
It's a big payday.
This is a little break. This is how much work for you.
You got a nameplate?
It's less of a commute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, everybody.
Thank you, Brian. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to resident comments. What do we have, Mike?
Uh, Mr. Corleone?
Yep.
A little musical fanfare wasn't to witness Eric leaving or my coming, and I apologize for it. My wife did that in church one time, and I kind of blamed her for it now. If she's watching, I'm sorry. I was guilty then, Elaine, and I apologize now. Let me say, gentlemen and the Simmons, that I'm not sure many people come here to thank the Select Board. But I'd like to thank you for choosing the council you did to represent us in this matter of EverSource's so-called Gas Reliability Project, the pipeline. I practiced law for a long time, made my living that way. Forty-five years was a very good life, and I think we did some good things. This lawyer, I think, is an example of a good lawyer doing good lawyering. Why would I say that? I don't know the man personally. All I know is the letter I read that he wrote as a result of the MIPA hearing, Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act Office hearing here in Long Meadow back in the summer. At that listening session, the representative of MIPA heard from EverSource, heard from citizens, and what was said there was obviously taken account of by Richard Canoff, the town's lawyer. I read his letter. It's a densely worded legal document meant for the benefit of MIPA, and it's really quite well done. If you haven't had an opportunity to read it, I would recommend it highly. Essentially, MIPA is an organization which is responsible for monitoring environmental activity in the Commonwealth, in particular, projects that may affect the environment. It is not an enforcement agency. It doesn't have the power to stop things or start things, but it does provide valuable material farther down the administrative line. So when a project like this is proposed, that project has to pass, pass in the sense of go by, MIPA. And MIPA has the authority to ask that organization to prepare and submit a so-called ENF, an environmental notification form in which they say essentially what they intend to do to and in the environment. MIPA then processes that paper and does hold an investigatory hearing, if you will, part of which was held here in Long Meadow. What does MIPA do with that stuff? Well, generally, it asks for comment. And in this case, there were, I know, over seven hundred comments, maybe a hundred of them were the form comment, you know, one, somebody presented an electronic or written form, which was just sort of a poll, if you will. But the rest of them were pretty meaningful, and among those comments was Richard Canoff's letter. And it stood out because first it was a real document that had substantive material. It wasn't, you know, a gripe kind of a thing. In addition, it laid out a roadmap for what is called a DEIR, which is, if I get this right, I. It's a draft environmental impact report, draft environmental impact report. And that DEIR is the responsibility of the project owner, that in this case, EverSource. Well, if one, and that document is prepared by MIPA, which is a, you know, good-sized state organization with plenty of bureaucratic assistance. So it's a carefully written document. If one were to take that request by or direction from MIPA to EverSource to produce this draft environmental impact report and match it up against Richard Canoff's letter, you would be surprised at how congruent those pieces of paper or many pieces of paper are. This letter's eleven pages. The D I E R, I read it electronically, so I'd have to guess it, written pieces of paper, but it was not dissimilar in length. And if you looked at the headings and compared the language, it is amazing. So what did we get? We got from Canoff the roadmap for MIPA to produce, obtain from EverSource this report, which will then be a part of the evidence used by the Environmental Facilities Sighting Board when it holds its administrative hearing, which is probably the major part of what decides the future of this project. So the next step will be for our attorney to present our case before the EFSP, the Energy Facilities Sighting Board. So if he does as good a job in person as he did in paper, then I think our chances are not bad.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Sorry I took so long. Sorry I fanfared the whole shebang.
You should have trumpets to herald you next time.
Well, I knew it was going to.
Did we get your name and address for the record?
I have it for the record.
It's James Turtleock, sixty-four Printwood Road, here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Do we have Tom next?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Do we have anybody online, Mike?
We have one person, yep.
Go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Hi. Hi, Jessica Kelly, and I was at Thirty-Something South Ave. Sorry for the background noise. So I was looking over the Long Range Planning Steering Committee document, and you state that your vision includes understanding where you have unintentionally been encouraging or allowing outdated municipal policies that exacerbate climate impacts and social and public health inequities. So I just wanted to bring that up because I've talked to Lynn Simmons and Josh Levine via email about some policies that were enacted by the Long Meadow School Committee last year in response to COVID and how that led to my four-year-old son being suspended from school for ten days solely because of his disability. He wasn't sick. He wasn't at risk of transmitting illness any more than his classmates, and he was suspended just because of his disability and his accommodation. We weren't given any compensatory services for him during that time, which is also required by law. I brought this up to you guys, and you haven't attempted to address it or find out what the rest of the story is or even talked to the school committee about it because you told me that you don't really have anything to do with the school department or any authority there. But looking over the Long Range Planning Steering Committee document, it specifically lists the different departments and the different people that you're wanting to be on that board or that you need people from each municipal department, I guess. And the school committee is listed just like every other department in the town. So I'm just wondering why the distinction is made when I came to you about this, that, oh, it's totally separate. But then in this document, it's just, it's just like everything else. So I guess it's just confusing for me why, two things, why it's inconsistent, but also why if you're looking for feedback from the community about areas where you can improve because your policies are inequitable, why are you so casual and dismissive about the policy that I brought up to you? Just because it has to do with the school committee? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mike? All right, moving on to the Town Manager Report. I'm sorry. Nope, moving on to Select Board Comments. I'm sorry, nope, moving on to Select Board Comments. Go ahead, Tom.
Just make a quick comment that I have been here for a couple of weeks. I've had COVID. I was out pretty much for a month, and I'm almost back to 100%. So just for folks to know, I wasn't trying to avoid any big votes, but I'd watch the meetings, and it seems like you guys don't really need me that much, but I'm here. You're stuck with me. That's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Mark brought this up to me this week, some, I don't know if you're going to speak on this, Mark, but there were some reports that the Waste Management hadn't finished the route on Monday, and there is, I've been in contact with the Recycling Committee, and part of the problem is people weren't aware that Columbus Day was not a trash holiday. So one of the things that's going to be done is some better outreach and signage when something like that is coming up. But more importantly, there are, there's discussions going forward on how we're going to get, put some more pressure on Waste Management to finish the routes, get the work done. And if people don't get their trash picked up, I know that there's a bit of a, it seems like the information is going into a bit of a black hole because there's a couple steps between residents, Town and Waste Management. And so we're talking about a better way to go about that, and if there's something that can be done so Waste Management knows that they need to do better work. We pay them a lot of money to do what they do, and they do a good job most of the time, but when they fail, we need to let them know. So it is in the works. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers for the Fall Festival. I went, I marched in the parade in the morning. Just overall, it was a really, really fun event, replacing Long Meadow days in the past. So I know people spent a lot of time and effort and several hours organizing, and I thought everyone did a really phenomenal job, and it was a great event. So just wanted to say thank you.
That's a good point, not just the volunteers, the town employees worked really well in getting the permits out and making sure everything went smoothly. I agree, it was a great weekend. All right, and now moving on to Town Manager Report.
Thank you. The School Building Committee has been finalized. This was a requirement during our eligibility period, and the roster was transmitted back to MSBA on September 28th. I just wanted the public to be aware that the group will consist of the Select Board Chair, Josh Levine, myself, the School Committee members, Nicole Sheneri and Julie Morgan, Superintendent Marty O'Shea, and I realize there's a typo in this, Director of Facilities, Nick Jorgantis, Procurement Manager Chad Thompson, School Principals Nicole Allen and Elizabeth Nelson, and the Community Representatives with the Educational Mission category are Armand Ray and Carissa Rosenbloom. And Finance Director Paul Pesterzic is also on the Building Committee. And Community Representatives with construction experience include Chris Legadre and David McGrane. And Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Tom Maza, will also participate. The group intends to convene after the October 25th Special Fall Town Meeting. In, this is regarding the Hazard Mitigation Plan. In late 2021, early 2022, the Assistant Town Manager, with help from the Town Engineer, applied for a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funding. This is to update our local multi-hazard mitigation plan. This is, the plan we currently have expired in 2021, and the funding opportunity was made available through MIMA, and I'm pleased to say that we were awarded this grant. The total budget for the project is estimated at $30,000, which is $22,000 in federal funds and $8,000 in non-federal cost share, and that's going to be composed comprised of staff time. There's quite a bit of detail here that I will not go into, but it is included in the Town Manager Report. This will largely follow the path that was taken for the 2016 Hazard Mitigation Plan, and with a, obviously, a current look on some of the climate and resilient issues that we're facing. And so I'll be happy to report back to you as that group starts its work. The Community Compact Grants had a grant funding round open for best practices. I did submit two grants. One was for the Wage and Classification Study, and one was for an IT Management Review. The IT Management Review would be similar to what we did for the DPW Organizational Study, and the Wage and Classification Study was actually one that we were going to fund with town funds, but when this grant opportunity became available, I applied. And I'm happy to say that both of those projects were funded. So the Wage and Class Study and the IT work will start in the next two to three weeks. Contracts have already been signed, and the School Department and the IT Director will be integral in doing the IT review. And an update on the Maple Center Shopping Plaza. This is probably one of the questions I get asked the most besides the cell tower. So I'm happy to say that this is moving along. On October 5th, at the Planning Board meeting, Capitol Studio Architects, who were hired on behalf of Pun Long Meadow Realty LLC, who owned the property, submitted a two-phase site and design review application to rebuild the Maple Street Plaza building. This would be Phase One, and Phase Two would be to reconstruct the parking area. The proposed design includes rebuilding the facility and its pre-existing footprint, as allowed by the zoning bylaws, and restructuring of, or reconstructing the parking area will disturb over one acre, so it triggers a land disturbance permit along with some other stormwater management-related permits. The Planning Board voted to accept the application and complete, as complete, and set the public hearing date for November 2nd, which is their next regularly scheduled meeting. Stakeholders and residents are encouraged to attend to view a presentation of the building plans by the applicant, ask relevant questions, and make their comments known to the Planning Board. You can also submit comments via email to Bianca, the clerk, or Planning Director Corinne Meisi-Munz, or you can send them in by mail to 20 William Street. And all the documents are available online. There's a Google Drive link listed in my Town Manager Report here. And that concludes my update for tonight. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just want to note a thank you to Corinne for her work on the grants, as always. I was excited to get some free money.
Just a question, you commented that the Wage and Class Study is not funded by a grant. Does that mean we'll be amending the warrant article that, to use town funds to pay for that?
No. That warrant article was structured to fund the COLAs and implementation of the Wage and Class Study along with contracting for the Wage and Classification Study. So what this does is frees up money that allows us to then implement the study. And then one thing I did want to also make sure that was announced here. In addition to tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday night's informational session on the warrant, I also have open office hours, Monday, October 24th in the morning, and in the afternoon of October 25th, if residents have questions on warrant articles or need clarification on anything, they could stop by the office, call, or send an email. And I've blocked out, I think it's two or three hours on both of those days to address any questions that people have.
Okay, anything from the Board on the monthly reports? Moving on to approval of the meeting minutes from September 19th.
I move we approve the Long Meadow Select Board Meeting Minutes, regular minutes of September 19th.
Second.
All those in favor? And any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Next up, an old business, electric vehicle charging update. So to sum up activities, since I brought it up last time, which was maybe a month ago, we asked Eversource to send someone to speak with us to get some more information on the rates that we're paying and rates at different facilities, et cetera. Eversource declined. The person that we would think would be the most knowledgeable on talking to us about this said that he was not the one most knowledgeable to talk to and wouldn't tell us who to speak with. But he did give us the good information that there is a filing right now in front of the DPU for a electric vehicle rate, and we don't know what that rate is. I tried to look at the docket, could not figure it out. I'm going to try to dig on that. But to put it shortly, I don't want to guess on what our rate should be anymore. If there's going to be a new rate that comes out in January, then if there's something, if we can use credits to offset or whatever we want to charge, I think we'll work with that. I don't want to try to guess and reinvent the wheel if it may, everything may change in January. So that's my thinking right now, and hopefully we'll get more information, but it's hard to pry out of Eversource, unfortunately. Tom?
Yeah, well, while I was in convalescence, I guess, I turned to one individual from the town who spoke about, you know, what we had planned and how much mileage people would get per kilowatt and all that sort of thing. That was really helpful. I was glad that person stepped forward because, yeah, we should know what we're doing, and getting this guidance from the state would be a big help. And then the other part is, you know, if there is, you know, if we're going to do, like, I'm just still feeling, on Route 5, we're going to have people who can just come off and get filled, and he talked about that, too. He says if it was a quick charge station, you know, people can just, you don't have to have it near any specific center. And I think there are several locations on Route 5 that we could utilize for that, and hopefully we'll talk more about that in the future.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to comment, I went and looked at my personal electric bill, and I'm residential in Long Meadow, I assume everybody in Long Meadow is paying the same thing I am, I hope they are, but maybe not, paying 30 cents a kilowatt hour. You know, I think the town's peak rate may be a little bit less than that, but not much. You know, until we know what the rates are, you know, I think the overwhelming message I got, I hope other people on the Select Board got that as well, is charge what it costs us, and if people can't deal with that, then don't use our services. But if the town is cheaper by two cents or four cents or whatever it is a kilowatt hour, it may take a long time, but it's cheaper to get it there than at home. And if it's not, do it at home. You know, I mean, so my sense is, Josh, you're right. I mean, if the rates change, we can look at it again, but right now, the rates haven't changed. They may, they may not in a couple of months, and if they do, we'll look at it. But right now, you know, the overwhelming sense I got from people in town was, you know, we shouldn't be subsidizing people who own electric vehicles, and nor should we be looking to make a fortune on them. I mean, we're just trying to bill them for what we did. And we thought we were, and I still believe, that we were charging based on our cost per kilowatt hour. If it turns out that's not our cost, then let's take another look at it. But right now, I'm comfortable with the decision we made based on the basis for which we made that decision. If the data changes or if the background changes that would change our decision, then I'm willing to look at it again. But unless the data, which is what it costs us per kilowatt hour, changes, I'm not interested in having a major subsidy for people who have electric vehicles.
I'm not convinced the data we got was entirely, I'm just not sure if that was right, and that's what I want to get from Eversource. Right, until we do, and if everything's going to change in January, I'm not going to clamor for it anymore. But what, if we do subsidize, that is a different talk from down the road because I think we need to have a set amount, and so I won't even dig into it at all here because we need to know the rate. And so that, so that's where I'm at now.
I completely agree. I think, I hate to kick the can down the road, but I think we do need to wait until we get the rate from DPU in terms of, and then we can proceed with looking at the other data to see what makes sense come January or February. But I don't have a problem waiting until we get that rate to make sense of everything.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to the updated state election warrant. I understand we were missing the questions from our warrant.
The day after the previous meeting, we actually received that election warrant, so this is just an updated copy for you guys to, and I think I included the motion in there, too, on the agenda.
We approve the updated, we approve the state election warrant as modified on our current, current agenda and distribution.
Second.
And then you just need to set the location for.
The vote can be at 7:35, Long Meadows, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, moving on to new business. We have an Eversource petition for regulator station projects, and we have a representative from Eversource here to present.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Great, thank you.
My name is Richard Salvarez, Lead Engineer with Eversource Energy. I can jump right into the petition if you'd like.
Sure, do you need to start screen sharing right away, or do you want to speak first?
Oh, yeah, sure, I can put a, just a brief presentation I have up on screen. Oh, I'm getting a disabled message here.
Give me one second. Go to the right of his name up top.
There we go. Okay. Can everybody see that? Are you guys seeing on screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
All right, so just a brief background here. So this is a continuation of a petition that we had submitted last year, early 2021, for some safety upgrades to some of our regulator stations in the town. We are proposing as a part of this petition, two additional regulator stations to add what we're calling remote telemetry devices, which, and that's industry, I know, but essentially what these are, are remote monitoring equipment that allows Eversource to wirelessly monitor the performance of our regulator stations. And this is actually a Phase Two project to some safety enhancements that were made to all of our regulator stations post Marimac Valley. So that was Phase One, that was completed roughly in 2019. Phase Two was started last year. We've been working in the town to add some of these devices, and we're in progress on a few projects, but these are an additional two locations that we're proposing to add these telemetry cabinets to. What I have up on the screen is just a couple of images of what these devices will look like. Essentially, they are, you know, what I generally refer to as a traffic control-style box that you would generally see near an intersection, but in this case, it is natural gas monitoring equipment, some systems that just sense the pressure of, the operating pressure of our regulator station, gets the general status of some of our equipment, and it allows our gas control room to wirelessly monitor in real time what's going on at the regulator station. So they're aluminum cabinets. They are mounted to a small concrete pedestal, and we equip some traffic control posts to protect the cabinet. And just have some rough dimensions here. The height is approximately five and a half The height is approximately five and a half feet and width is approximately two and a half by two feet, approximately. I have the exact dimensions here on the screen. But, um, yeah, essentially, again, these are, it's a safety enhancement to our regulator station. It's gonna allow us to remotely monitor the safety and the condition of the station. And, uh, and, uh, and that's what I have. There is some underground work involved in this, these projects. We have to run some lines, some gas lines to the cabinet. We generally try to locate the cabinet near to our vaults. I will show a couple of just line drawings here. The two locations are, um, if you guys can see these drawings, if you can't, let me know. But there's two locations, the first being at Forest Glen.
We're not, we're not seeing your different, we're still on the first picture, Mr. Salver.
I'm sorry.
You've gotta go back and reshare the new.
Let me fix that here. You guys should see it now.
Yep.
So the first location is Forest Glen. And I, we have a little clearing here next to the road. I can pull up Google Street View in a moment. But we're proposing cabinets just to the right of our existing vaults. And I'll just, I'll show Google Street View here so you guys can get a sense of exactly where this is. So we're here on Forest Glen.
Just west of South Park.
Hopefully you guys can see this.
Yep.
Um, there is a little clearing on the side of the road, and we have our regulator station positioned near the tree line. We're proposing the cabinets to be situated just to the right in the image you're seeing, so the patch here. We have, we have some underground work that we also have to do here at the station, some safety upgrades to the station as well. But we are also proposing telemetry cabinets here. And the second location, I'll show the line drawing again here. Uh, bear with me. Is at the intersection of Shaker Road and Leatwood Drive. We have a below grade station here, concrete vault. We're proposing a telemetry cabinet just to the east of that station as well. And I'll just show Google Street View again. For Shaker Road, if we see here, this is Shaker Road, Leatwood Drive. We have our existing station here. We're proposing our telemetry cabinets to be placed in this image just to the right of those vaults, or that vault there in the grass. Any questions on these?
See, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah. Mr. Salverezo, thank you. This is Mark Gold. So people at home know, I, I actually emailed Mr. Salverezo a series of eight questions late last week so that he'd be, hopefully be prepared to answer them. And on this, I guess, my biggest question, we're gonna, I'll, I'll start with just the telemetry cabinets because that's what you've spoken about. One of my concerns is, as you showed that first picture, the yellow, the four yellow bullards, bullards are, are pretty ugly in a residential neighborhood. And, you know, based on the, the drawing you have, you know, they, they go down quite a ways. I mean, they're, they're not just for show. They would stop a, a car going 25, 30, maybe even 45 miles an hour from hitting it. My question is, why can't we get those painted same color as the, as the cabinet so at least they aren't as aesthetically annoying, being that bright yellow?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. What, what you're seeing there, the yellow aspect to those posts is actually a plastic cover that slips onto the, what is a concrete filled pipe, essentially a heavy duty pipe. We prefer the yellow because it's, you know, very visible in winter, very visible in the summer. But they, they do make other options for those posts, those post covers rather. So we can purchase some green posts, you know, if that's preferred, we would, we would, you know, call for some sort of reflective striping or something like that to just, you know, make sure the motorists, the small plow operator, you know, whatever vehicles are passing by can see it. But, you know, like I said, yellow's preferred, but we can, you know, get other options.
Thank you. Yeah, Richard, Tom Lucius, you know, you showed that picture of basically the edge of Forest Park on Forest Glen, and that's, whole side of the street is wooded, a lot of people run in that area and so forth. And what about shrubbery to hide this thing? You know, if that whole street is basically undeveloped, other than nature's development, could you have some shrubbery in front of this thing so it wouldn't be so out there? I don't know, it'd probably be a nice thing to do on the, the second placement also. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, we have, we have provided shrubbery in the past, and that's, you know, not an issue for us. We, a good example of that is at the intersection of Williams and Dorrell. We have another regulator station. We did some work as a component of last year's petition, and we installed a few arborvitae bushes just to cover two sides of the cabinet. We, we need to leave the front side of it open, or, or we need to leave some spacing, you know, between any shrubbery. But, you know, we could certainly provide some shrubbery just to obscure that cabin a little bit.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could see just an example of how that would, the finished project would look at some point, so.
This, this is Josh Levine. Have you given notice to either of the residents that will be abutting the, the one on Shaker?
Uh, we have not yet given them notice.
More general question, can you explain to people listening or watch this later? How do, in Eversource's view, how do these telemetry cabinets, what do they do and how are they related to Marimac Valley?
Sure. So what these, we have a bunch of various pressure systems throughout our operating territory. And really what those are, different vitiges of pipe and different operating pressures that have been installed over the years. These regulator stations are interconnection points between those different pressure systems. And so they, they regulate pressure from high level to low level. And they're completely mechanical devices that operate without human control. They're, they're automatic. But, you know, after Marimac Valley, there was great interest in upgrading just regulator stations in, in general to provide real time feedback. So essentially, if there's a mechanical failure, if there's a damage that occurs or any malfunction, really, there is interest in having our gas control room be able to continuously monitor 24/7 the operation of a regulator station. So that in the event of some abnormal condition, could be high pressure, could be low pressure or no pressure, or the operation of one of our safety valves, there was interest in having an, an alarm be generated in the control room so that our operators could be dispatched to the station to make repairs, shut down the station, or just investigate in general. So it, it's really kind of a visibility, uh, monitoring sort of scheme that's being implemented to, to just monitor our systems and that.
So it's remote monitoring, but it, does it connect to the actual station? Can any, can there be a shutdown remotely, or do you have to get Eversource people on site to do any actual work once the alarm goes off?
Um, we, so the, the cabinet itself does not have the capability to shut down the station. But within the station, even today, we have automated valves that can detect an abnormal condition will automatically close. And those were implemented very soon after Marimac Valley. As a FEDIS, too, there was interest in knowing exactly when those automatic valves operated.
Josh, if I could. I was just gonna say, Josh, the analogy, and this is a bad one, but take your, your home thermostat. Inside the system, it works like your home thermostat. It's internally controlled. When it gets too hot, it cools it down. When it gets too cold, it turns it on. What this is doing is then taking that thermostat and putting something on it that now tells Eversource in their remote location exactly what's going on in that, in that telemetry, in that control station. So they're going from, if you will, internal control to internal control with external monitoring. I, I believe, Mr. Salverezo, that, is that a fair analysis of what you're doing?
Yeah, it would be the equivalent of, you know, if your thermostat was malfunctioning in your house and, and the temperature was raising uncontrollably, let's say, to 90 degrees, you would have a, a breaker switch that would close automatically and shut down your heating system. And what this telemetry box is, is essentially an alarm. So that, if that breaker tripped, you know, you would want, you would want to know about it right away. And an alarm is generated and you could respond.
Okay, so it's, anything happening in the box is automatic and then Eversource would come. My just question was, well, what if the alarm doesn't go off somewhere, there's an issue there? But I think that automatic recovery, so Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, to follow up, when we, a lot of these are coming before us, and sometimes they're not involved, sometimes the residents of the property are requesting this sort of a box, you know, for electrical something or so, or it's on town land. And I think not letting the, the immediate residents have any way to contact us, you know, prior to a vote on this, you know, I'm wondering why that's happening. I think that it would be nice to know because there's, we don't know all, every neighborhood that intimately, and there could be something about those specific locations, even though you, they're prime locations because there's an underground vault. It might, it would be nice to hear from, from residents. That would be one thing. The second thing is, you may realize that there's a proposed pipeline that one of the paths could involve going down Forest Glen, I believe, right? And how would this be affected if a pipeline was moved down that street?
Uh, there would be no effect. Those two projects are, are totally independent of each other. You, you are correct, a proposed pipeline does, one of the routes does pass that location on Forest Glen. But there, there's no connection between the pipeline and these cabinets. It's strictly regulator station for a reason.
Okay, thank you.
That one's right on Shaker, which is about a quarter mile from the proposed, you know, site at LCC. Go ahead, Mark.
This is Mark Gold again. I, I just want to go through the questions that I sent you. My preface to this is that, you know, I, I believe that improved monitoring is beneficial to all of us. The system exists, there's a pipeline there. The more we can monitor it, in my opinion, and, and get, you know, outside warning, the better off we are. The one thing that concerns me, though, is the installation of this. Because there's a, if you will, a hot tap, which is a, there's actually a, a line that ties into or comes off of the current gas line that goes to this telemetry station. It's, it's tubing. It's not a full sail sized pipe, but it's tubing, it's got natural gas in it that goes in there. And so we're gonna be connecting into our natural gas line into this telemetry box. And that's the basis for the following questions, which are the ones I sent you. And I'm just gonna read through them, and then you can kind of go through and, if you don't mind, answer them. And one is, you know, what, what training have the contractors had who are gonna be working on this gas pipeline in terms of tapping into gas pipelines? How frequently has that train, training given? When was the last time they were, it was completed by this contractor? Have the individuals working on this project been briefed by them on the Marimac Valley incident and read the report that describes the primary cause of the situation? I, I believe that Marimac Valley included subcontractors of then Columbia Gas and not employees. And I'm concerned that we pass these things on to subcontractors and sub subcontractors who may not be as knowledgeable as, as Eversource. And so, you know, my question is, who will have primary responsibility for safety during these, these two projects? Is she or he an Eversource employee? Will she or he be on site during the entire project? Will she or he sign off on all incursions into the gas pipe, including all pressure regulators and their control systems? And will your central monitoring location have been notified that this work is taking place in case of an abnormality in the supply line pressure? And, you know, I say that because what happened in, in Marimac Valley is people in, in Ohio didn't know what was going on. And so when the pressure started rising, they didn't know how to respond. And finally, you know, I'm concerned about people working there. I think we've expressed that in the past. So what kind of vapor testing of the atmosphere within the vault is done routinely to ensure it's below the lower explosive limit before any pipeline breaks or taps go, take place for, or any potential spark is created? So if you can go through those questions, I appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, so the first question is around training and how our contractors are trained. A little background here, so it is a federal code requirement that all of our both internal and external contract workers are operator qualified to perform various tasks on, on the gas system. So that's a federally mandated requirement, certain right into federal code. We do re-qualify all of our workers in, generally, every three years, 36 months. But with some of our more critical tasks, like tapping, some of our other, you know, more technical tasks, we re-qualify every 12 months. So that's for, again, contract workers, company workers, our inspection, our inspectors. So everybody is, is operator qualified. Now, exactly when that's been completed for these crews, I can't speak to that, but our, our QA QC department is responsible for making sure that none of those operator qualifications In terms of, you know, specific briefings related to the Marimac Valley incident, we really don't track which employees receive certain briefings. But what I will add is that all of our internal policies, procedures, our, our standards, how we actually get the work done, is constantly being reviewed for any, any improvements we can make, safety enhancements, lessons learned within our own territories or within the industry as a whole, or even changes in code. So the policies and procedures by which our contractors abide are constantly being upgraded and changed to, to account for any of these safety enhancements that we need to make. In terms of, you know, oversight on these projects, I, just a little, little bit of background on how we construct these, these devices. And you talk about natural gas concern, tapping of, of our lines. There's really two phases. There's a construction phase of the, the device itself or any pipeline. So there's a construction of what I'll call a pipeline system that hasn't been activated, kind of a dead pipeline. And then the second phase is an activation phase. Now, when we're just constructing the, the bed facility prior to activation, our contractors are out on site doing the work. We have a couple of layers of oversight there. We have a, a team of, you call them, pipeline coordinators or basically inspectors from an engineering firm we hired to oversee this work. But we also have our internal, our company technicians who are directly responsible for maintaining these regulator stations onsite 100% of the time as well. So we have a contract. So we have a contract engineering firm onsite monitoring the work. We also have an internal employee monitoring the work. Now, that's during the construction phase. During the activation phase, when we're actually doing the live gas work, all of that work is done by our internal crews. So our internal crews will come in to perform the live gas work. Now, when those, when that activation occurs, we bring in another layer of oversight, what we call the procedure supervisor, which is a supervisor that comes in and actually monitors a procedure that our technicians, our gas crew, our internal crews will go step by step on our handoff procedures that have been reviewed by engineering and the control room. And then during construction and during activation, we have periodic visits by our QA QC department. Continue your questions. Terms of sign-off, as I mentioned, each step of the procedure is signed off on, our procedures are sealed by a professional engineer. And prior to the actual procedure being followed in the field, twenty-four hours prior, there's the requirement to notify gas control, our control room, that the work is coming. And then during the procedure itself, we have notification steps to gas control anytime we're changing flow of gas. So there is that control room feedback loop that we maintain, you know, communication. And then I believe your final question was regarding testing of the atmosphere in the vault. That's a responsibility of our internal technicians. Again, the gentleman who are responsible for maintaining these regulator stations, they're all what's called a combustible gas indicator, which is a device that tests the atmosphere inside of the vault and will return data about the percent of gas. And if the percent of gas falls within the explosive range, we have steps in place for how we handle a situation like that and how we respond. So we don't have workers going into a dangerous environment.
Thank you very much.
I got a few more questions. How many other of these, this is Josh Levine again. How many other of these stations are there in town right now?
Not paired with an exact number, but kind of an order of magnitude, it's something around a range of ten or so regulator stations distributed across the town.
And are there plans for this to happen in all the vaults eventually?
Yes.
Do you know how many vaults there are?
Each vault in Long Meadow, each station in Long Meadow is a vault. So it's approximately ten plus or minus, you know, one or two, so let's call it between eight and twelve.
Oh, sorry. All right, so I might have, my first question was, how many telemetry, I can't say, the monitoring stations are there as opposed to the vault? Same answer?
Existing?
Yeah, existing, right.
Okay, I understand now.
That's what I thought. The ones we already did.
Okay.
It's only the ones we've already approved.
Yeah, if there was the ones we have already approved from last year, I can pull it up. I apologize if it didn't have this data ready.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's five or so sites from last year.
And the plan is eventually to have ten, roughly?
Roughly ten, yeah.
Josh, if I could, I mean, clearly, you know, I'm real concerned that, you know, what happened in Merrimack Valley was, they didn't follow the procedures. There's a, I worked in the chemical industry for thirty-five years. It was a clear pipeline, pipe breaking procedure, and they didn't follow pipeline, pipe breaking policies. They didn't get permits, they didn't notify people. Everything that could go wrong, they did wrong. And it could happen again. My questions were intended to make sure that Eversource has pipeline breaking policies and procedures and, you know, so that what happened there cannot happen again. I'm, you know, sure being there ourselves, there's no way of knowing it, but it sounds like that the policies are there and hopefully they see fit to follow those policies on. You know, like I said before, from a engineering perspective, I think having a remote monitoring system is far better than not having it because then, you know, somebody knows something's going wrong in that vault as opposed to it's going wrong and nobody's around to see or hear it. So, but I, you know, I think we're, it's the twenty-first century means of making sure we've got as much safety as we can, I think.
Right, I generally agree. Aesthetically, they're not great, but sometimes that has to be sacrificed for the safety of the town.
I mean, I've got a cable TV box about the same size as that in front of my house. You kinda learn to live with it because it's painted green that kinda blends into the background. But that's why my comments were the, the yellow posts make it very difficult to blend in the background. And frankly, the posts are there to protect it, they're gonna protect it whether they're yellow or green or brown or whatever it is. And I just assume, see that be as aesthetically pleasing as possible for the neighbors because the neighbors are gonna get this, I think, whether they want it or not, Tom. I mean, certainly, you know, they can comment on it, but, you know, like you said, some of us have cable boxes, some have electrical, some have phone boxes like this in front of their house. It's part of the nature of having underground utilities, that stuff has to come up from. But I agree, I think we ought to ask that it be made as innocuous as possible. And I like your suggestions, whether it's plantings or green posts or something.
I would like the residents to know that it's coming, not necessarily, yeah, but I think in the future if Eversource could give that notice, and I think we should do that now with these folks. Not necessarily to, they can tell us they don't want it, but unfortunately, I think that the push has to come to shove on this, and it's more important to monitor the system and keep it safe. But I would like them to be aware before we move forward. Any other questions from the rest of the board?
No, because I think the only way a resident who lives near these locations would know is if they had read the agenda and were able to figure out this is their neighborhood. And they, they could have had access to the, would they have access to any of the diagrams?
No, so, well, they would if they checked the agenda, but what differentiates this from a poll petition, which is what usually would happen for a hearing, is that that would be sent out to a butters. This is falling into your lap because of the objects on the tree belt policy, which there's no process for notifying the butters on our end for that. So that's kind of where it falls. It's different than a poll petition if I had it correct.
Thanks.
All right.
I guess my question, and the best way to let these people know now, we can require Eversource to do it, or we can do it.
I mean, I don't wanna sound, come across crass, but if people had showed up here and said, "I don't want this on my front lawn," I think my response to them would have been, it's part of the greater good, now let's see how we can make this acceptable to you or amenable to you as opposed to, we're not gonna do it. In fact, it's not their front lawn, it's our front lawn because it's towns right away.
No, I agree.
I mean, and I'm not trying to be obnoxious if somebody came here and said, "I absolutely don't want it on my front lawn." I try to explain to them, you know, it's really in your best interest having this remote monitoring because there's a vault under there already. So, you know, I agree, we ought to tell them, but I think they ought to be informed that it's coming so that when somebody shows up to start digging there, they're not saying what the heck's going on, right?
And we can work with them on aesthetics, not, just to cut them off.
If I could just jump in here, I could also just send a letter to the butters.
I think that'd be great.
About my comment, information, and we can work with them on settings and things like that.
I think that'd be good, and do that in the future on these.
And then, I think, because it is, people who drive along there know at Forest Glen, this is Forest Park, there's a park on my right. And, you know, in theory, we're responsible for what goes on the outside of that park. And so, you know, if you agree to put these, some shrubs and paint it green so it kinda blend in, I think we're doing the best we can.
Actually, well, the Forest Glen one, I don't think I would want it to blend in too much because people go fast there.
Well, it is a straightaway, it's not a straightaway.
People will also pull off the road and park there.
Yeah, so that I don't want anybody running in, and it's across the street, it's Forest Park, it's beautiful, I'm glad it's there, I don't want anybody running into it. So we'll have to think more about that one. That's my concern there because people do fly around that corner and shoot up the street.
Right, yeah, I think they could have some shrubs and have the yellow balls and do the best you can.
Right, okay.
If a person's drunk driving, doesn't matter what you have.
Yeah, the only thing that I would, I mean, I completely agree with the board in terms of just making it more aesthetically pleasing because some of the, probably some of the most complaints, I would say that at least I personally received, especially when we look at Maple Road, for example, when they paved, I was getting a ton of complaints of just all the weeds and the grass and lack thereof. So I think if we can make it pleasing for the folks looking out as much as possible, then it's probably gonna minimize some of the complaints. And overall, it is a, it is a safety issue that benefits the town and its town properties, so.
Dan, you weren't here when Tennessee Gas Pipeline decided they were gonna put markers along Osso-Posthoff Road, up on people's yards, they put these
Yeah, the yellow.
Four-foot obnoxious yellow things up on people's, you know, forty feet up on people's ride, I mean, talk about people not being happy, so. Josh, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'll make a motion that we approve the Eversource request to put these two telemetry systems on, one on Shaker and Leatwood and the other at Forest Glen, with the condition that they have them blend into the background, certainly eliminate the yellow poles on Shaker and Leatwood, and do whatever they can to make it amenable on Forest Glen as well.
I would support that with also the condition that they contact the butters.
And they contact the butters, how's that?
Okay.
Well, you can second that.
I'll second that. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much, we appreciate your comment, Richard, and your being open and answering our questions, we appreciate it.
I appreciate you being prepared to answer my questions as well.
Appreciate the time, thank you.
Next on the, under new business, we have appointment of a select board representative to the long-range planning steering committee. Lynn, were you presenting this one?
I can.
Please.
So this is what you had been briefed on a couple meetings ago. Now that we've received the MVP grant award, Corinne has been getting started on this, and one of the major components of this is forming a committee. This is under the guidance of the planning board, that's who has the authority of long-range plans. So we have a draft membership list here made up of up to twenty people, including one member of the select board. So you don't need to identify that person tonight, but we would ask that you do that in the next two or three meetings because this group will be getting started. There's currently a bid out right now to hire the consultant to do this work for us.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
I'm not volunteering, by the way. You know, I've been on a lot of committees, twenty members seem so unwieldy. I mean, I understand how we selected them or how you selected them and categorized them, but it seems to me that a group of that size is gonna be very hard-pressed to be functional. Like, you know, has thought been given to why we and how we're gonna, they're gonna manage within a group of twenty?
Yeah, and so there's different chapters of the long-range plan that are relevant to some group, some of the group as opposed to the others. So while there may be one kickoff meeting with everyone there, I don't believe that they intend to have twenty people at every single meeting. They do break out into subgroups, there's a housing chapter, there's a climate chapter. There'd be public meetings, so anyone could go, but I don't believe they intend to have all twenty members at each meeting.
Can you remind us of the timeline of how long
Yeah, so it's a pretty significant commitment. Obviously, if there's, you know, changes that, I mean, you can't make it, then we would readjust. But it's anticipated that this is an up to two-year project.
Okay.
Yeah, having just said twenty people's too many, I will say, I got a note from somebody, from Mary Beth Bergeron, asking to have the permanent building committee potentially consider, and I'm not doing membership here, she might have sent it to everyone, I don't know, but to be, as a member of this committee, and as I said, I mentioned, so I'll mention it.
Sure, so I did respond, I received the same, actually several of those from Mary Beth. And I did respond today to that. And the rationale for why the permanent building committee was not identified there is that is an inward-facing group. It looks at town buildings, that's their charge. These groups that were identified here are outward-facing groups. They represent issues out in the community, primarily resident-based. So it's very, the permanent building committee charge is very different. That's not to say that they wouldn't have input or couldn't be part of any of the public forums because certainly we would want that. But as, to have a seat at the table, at some point, you have to draw the line, and that's where we drew it on this one.
Well, does anyone want to volunteer?
And you can, you don't have to decide tonight.
We don't have to decide tonight, but my, my first thought was, Dan's the youngest of us and needs to have the longest range.
Gee, I think that sounds great.
I was thinking Mark Gold.
Well, we could have a nomination battle next time.
I'll vote for you if you want.
That's dangerous. But we can think about it, I just, I'm now on the middle school committee.
Right, yeah, that's good.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot, so, well, we'll take it under advisement.
Tom, don't sit there.
Yeah, I'm still trying to get to the housing committee on a regular basis, so, along with the council of aging, which is on Thursday.
Get ready for a tax barrage, Dan, we'll see. All right, well, thank you, Lynn, we'll take that up at another meeting. Okay, next on the agenda, the Town of Long Meadow Senior and Veteran, I'm sort of lost it, Senior and Veteran Tax Abatement Program.
I just moved adult center director into, just in case there's any questions.
We've done, I've done this multiple times, I went back and looked at prior ones that we've approved, I think they've essentially been the same document, in fact, the same typo, so we should correct the typo in this one, it was in all of them that, in the second, first full paragraph, tier, T-I-E-R, spelled tire, T-I-R, but that typo's been in the last three, so it's just proof that all we've been doing is copying and pasting it, it's appropriate. I'm moving, we approve the Senior Veterans Tax Abatement Program.
Second.
Tim, did you have anything to add while we got you here?
No, I just, thank you for having me tonight, and then also the importance that this program does for not only the council on aging department, but other departments within the town. We get a tremendous response from the applicants that are happy to work within the departments and doing a number of things for the town. The health centers utilize our volunteers for a number of years now to help with things in the food pantry and our Meals on Wheels program and then other areas and then other town departments who have also used, so we've utilized volunteers in school department and search department and others. So the response from the The response from the community has always been strong about this program. We try to also offer it to not only seniors, but the veterans. Last year, I think we had about 16 total volunteers. Eleven of those were seniors and then five of them were veterans. And then we placed them throughout, you know, a variety of departments in town. And there's just a great response. And, you know, we wouldn't be able to have certain things, core services that we offer at the center without their support. So I appreciate you guys for reviewing the application. I'll clean up some of the edits on there. And, yeah, just thank you for reviewing it.
Well, thank you, Jim. I wanted to, brought you in, I wanted to say thank you. I think it's a great program. And also because when I go to a meeting and I don't get prepared and I don't get called on, I always get very sad. So I wanted to make sure you got a chance to talk. So thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
All right, thanks for having me.
All right, we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion?
Real quick, I just wanted, so how are we, I guess, proactively notifying these seniors and veterans? Are we doing that or just...
Jim?
Yeah, how we're doing it is that we advertise in our newsletter. So our upcoming November newsletter, we let everybody know that the applications are being reviewed, the process, and then we go about collecting all those applicant, applications, reviewing them, and then, you know, the volunteer hours then begin in January. So we do it through the newsletter, but we also do a lot of work out at the adult center. And then we also do kind of reach out to the volunteers that have been helping over the past year. They ask, you know, when will the new applications be available? Will I still have my same volunteer assignment that I had this past year? You know, I know somebody that's interested, how do they apply? So all of those things have been successful in the past and getting the board on. We also do some local press releases too with reminder, and we also have given updates to our social media page, our Facebook page.
I think Lena mentions it at veterans groups.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, thanks again, Jim.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, we have the Long Meadow Police Supervisors Contract. We discussed this in executive session today. Does anything you want to add, Lynn? Otherwise, we can have a motion.
No, I mean, I'm just happy to present the updated contract to you. It's a result of many months of negotiations between myself and the supervisors' union. And I think we have a fair agreement here tonight for you.
All right, thank you, Lynn, for your hard work on this. And to the supervisors' union, I'm sitting at the table with Lynn, we appreciate everything. Go ahead, Mark.
Because people are going to ask, I think we should just give them the key points is it's a three-year contract. I don't know, Lynn, if you wanted to go, but it's a three-year contract with annual increases of the current schedule of two and a half, two and a half, and two and a half percent over the three years. There's obviously a whole bunch of other issues that are being discussed and being addressed through the contract, but for the most part, everybody always says, "What do you pay races and where are they going?" So I thought we'd notice that. I don't know if there's anything else, Lynn, that's, falls outside the, I'll call them the normal contract issues, but I didn't see any that I thought were worth mentioning.
No, and for the public at home, the tentative agreement that we're referring to is linked to the agenda. It will be incorporated into a new contract and will be posted on the HR website as all the town contracts are.
Oh, and I forgot to bring this up before. There is a reference to Attachment A, which isn't on here, in the promotion policy.
That is the language that's going to go into the contract for promotions. I can send you that separately.
Okay.
I would, we approve the tentative agreement with the police supervisor's union.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, congratulations. And then one more for you, Lynn, the approval of the select board rules and orders discussion.
Yes, so I don't actually need you to do anything with this tonight, I just wanted to brief you on it. This is part of the Ecode project. There are several rules and regulations that Ecode reviewed just as they did with the bylaws, but that do not need town meeting approval. So the select board ones are one of them, which are actually our traffic rules and orders. That document dates back to the 1930s. It exists only in the police department in a three-ring binder. It was scanned as well as it could be, and General Code spent quite a bit of time going through it. This was an add-on to the existing contract once I figured out that this existed. I wanted it to become a searchable document that the town staff and residents had access to, which is why it was folded into Ecode. Just today, I uploaded the draft of all of the rules, the parking rules and regulations because most of you probably have never seen it. There are very little, if any, changes. So the first document that was linked to the agenda is what is being changed, which as you'd see, if you looked at it, it's very minor. And then the second document that was uploaded are the actual existing rules, parking rules and regulations. So again, I don't need you to do anything tonight. I'd rather wait until after the town meeting vote on the bylaws. And then hoping that goes well, I would ask you to vote on this November 7th. The planning board has voted on their rules and regulations already, and I believe that the conservation commission will need to do so as well.
Are there any other regulations or laws that we don't, that are just sitting in a binder somewhere?
I hope not.
Okay, so you think we've caught everything?
I hope, I hope.
Yeah, when you sent this, I was shocked. It's very, like, I had to look up what coasting was, there's streets reserved for coasting.
Yes.
Driving with your clutch in. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I guess, Lynn, since we can approve it, I was really looking at the parking and traffic one. It's really outdated.
Yep.
And, I mean, there's missing lights, missing stop signs, missing, I mean, it tries to list all of them, but it obviously hasn't.
Yep.
Angled parking that isn't, how do we...
Yes.
So if we're going to approve it, can we also bring it up to date or is it not worth... I mean, clearly, I must have been able to name 10 or 12 stop signs that aren't listed in this, and I can't believe it tries to list them all.
The fines are pretty low, too.
And I like the idea that there's carriages still in there, that kind of...
It looks like they must have done, it was built in 1988. They did something through 1980, though. They're just like, they were adding the stop signs or whatever, but they must have stopped 40, this is 40 years ago.
Right.
So, yes, this has come up with some of the other things, especially anything that was considered controversial for the bylaws. We have a list of things that need to be addressed, but what was most important was adopting this new format so that we could actually look at what needs to be changed. So I think we have our work cut out for us. Perhaps this should become a goal, but we first and foremost should put this in a format that we can actually find it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Are these, are all of these rules, you may not know the answer to this now, are they all within our purview to make?
Yes, well, as far as I've been told, yes.
That's interesting.
Which is, yes.
I just know, in our neighborhood, we've asked traffic questions and been told, "Well, that's the state or..."
It is something I've questioned here because it's handled very different in a town than it is in a city. The traffic committee, the internal group, gets requests for street stop signs, and sometimes they get approved and sometimes they don't. And I've wondered that authority as well. And the list, obviously, is not kept up. So it's something I'll be looking at once I can wrap my head around the 60 pages of traffic rules.
This might be a dangerous thing for me to know about, but, okay. All right.
So you don't need any action?
No, no. I suppose if you felt comfortable voting on it, you could, but you can also, there's no hurry.
Well, the changes are very simple that we're making in this, if we voted today. I put it on the agenda today so we could talk about it, to get started, but it is a really simple vote if we want to move forward with it. It's up to everyone else.
Josh, if we don't need to, I just need to hold off. I want to talk to, because I just saw this today, obviously. I want to talk to Lynn about a couple of issues that I think may be problematic that we ought to, or have the opportunity to implement. We're never going to get the list of stop signs and traffic lights and stuff, but a couple of things in there that I'd love to see maybe as long as we're going to readopt it or we know what. So let's wait till November 7th.
That's fine. Talk to Lynn, she, that was the initial idea anyway, so...
And I can show you at that meeting what our test environment looks like for this so you can actually see what the public will see and what you'll work with. And I'm very hopeful this will pass next week. Next week? Yeah.
A week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Jeez. All right, so that's it. Anything on correspondence? Let's see, we have electric car charging station email, I've got a lot of those. I thank people for their input. Everyone was much nicer this time. All right, anything else from the board?
I'll move, will you, Jim?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, good night, everyone, thank you.